Welcome to the Hampden Town Council Meeting for November 16th, 2015. This time, could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the Consent Agenda? Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Rider. I'd like to pull Item H out of Communications. And if I understand, the purpose of this grant, I think the Town Council should consider preparing a proposal. It seems that this grant will be used to develop resource sharing between one or more communities, and I would like to put it on the agenda for the Infrastructure Committee meeting on November 24th, which is next Monday.
All right, so we'll pull it out for right now and then come back to it.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment? Do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda excluding Item 3H?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, at this time then, I think we'll pull Item 3H out for discussion. Counselor McAvoy?
Well, like I prematurely said, if I understand the purpose of this grant is to foster inter, you know, municipal relationships as far as sharing, you know, facilities, or sharing personnel, or sharing services, or whatever the case may be. So, I definitely think it's worth, you know, some time, you know, talking about this. And the next available committee meeting that we have is next Monday, the Infrastructure Committee meeting. And I'm not saying it shouldn't go someplace else, but this is the first opportunity we'd have to, you know, to discuss it, so that's where I'd like to put it.
So you want to make a motion to refer that to Infrastructure?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to refer the Local Government Efficiency/ Efficient Fund, a request for grant proposals to the Infrastructure meeting of November 24th.
Discussion? Public comment? Do I have a motion by Terry? A second?
Need somebody to second referral? I'll refer it. Yeah, I'll second it then. Nobody else?
All in favor of sending Item 3H to Infrastructure? Opposed? Thank you. Next item is public comments. At this time, the public is welcome to speak on any item that they would like to that is not on the agenda. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, we will move on. Policy agenda, news presentations and awards. At this time, we were in hopes to have Tom Russell here tonight, but he was unavailable to come. We wanted to do a little presentation in recognition of 27 years he has been the town's attorney. Prior to that, he had worked on the Hampden Planning Board. So, we would like to send out a good thank you for a lot of years of good service. He helped the town through a lot of rough times in those 27 years, and we really appreciate his time and effort. The next item is nominations, appointments and a public comment?
Tom Brand, 262 West in Allenham, Hampden. Comments very minor. There's something that has always bothered me since this item was first added to the agenda, is that in the past, when, before this item started to appear on agendas, if you had a situation where you wanted to make recognition to a particular individual, or to an organization, or something, under Presentations and Awards, then that presentation award would show up in the agenda, so now there was an official record. And it was part of the agenda. So when it came time to look up, for people to get recognition and identify themselves, or take a benefit of getting those kinds of awards and presentations, there was a place they could actually cite, and they could actually find it somewhere in the official record. And I've always had a problem, since this was added with no listing underneath it, as to what you were going to be doing on that particular day, who you were going to be recognizing. Go through the recognition process, which I think is great and wonderful for those who earn it, but it ought to be part of the record somewhere. And in the past, there would be a specific item for the recognition. Now, it's just buried under this title that has no subtitles underneath it identifying the fact that you're recognizing an individual for their contribution. And I, you know, as time goes on, I really wish the council would think about, you know, changing that in some way, so that you end up with an item that's part of the permanent record, when people look it up in the proceedings of the council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is nominations. Official return of votes. That would be Denise.
This item is informational only, and it's just, it's a report of the results, the official results of the election held on November 3rd for the Councilor-at-Large and School Board. We had a total of 1,553 voters cast their ballots, and the Councilor-at-Large, there were three positions available, and those receiving the highest number of votes were Gregory Saroyes, Ivan McPike, and Mark Cormier. And for School Board, there were two seats with only two candidates, so both candidates, Wallace Frazier and Anthony Liberatore, were both re-elected to the, elected to the School Board.
Thank you. Next item is Avery Caldwell, appointment to Board of Assessment Review. He was here earlier tonight for our Finance Committee meeting. Had a good conversation with Avery. It was recommended from Finance, with a unanimous vote, to accept Avery's application to the Board of Assessment Review. Public comment? Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the nomination of Avery Caldwell to an appointment to the Board of Assessment Review.
My second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Once again, we thank the citizens for stepping forward and making themselves available to serve on different boards in the town. The next item is Jane Jarvey, reappointment to the Recreation Committee. Counselor McAvoy, Services?
Thank you, Mayor Rider. At the Services Committee meeting on November 9th, we considered and voted in favor recommending to the council the reappointment of Jane Jarvey to the Recreation Committee. I make a motion that the council reappoint Jane Jarvey to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is unfinished business, sale of surplus vehicles. First item is a 1996 Ford E-350, Melo McCoy ambulance from Public Safety. It turns out that the winning bidder will be, or offer was $3,500 from Down East EMS in Baileyville. This is brought forward only as an informational thing for the public, so they understand how this works and where the sale is going. Anything under $5,000 is up to the town manager's discretion, but this is just for the public's knowledge. The other item is a 2007 Ford Crown Vec, that used to be Public Safety, then went to Public Works, no longer runs, it's setting out back, and that is being sold for $500. The next item under unfinished business is the MRC voting ballot. Previously, Town Manager Angus Jennings, we thought should be on the board for voting. Since then, it's been the town attorney's thought and Manager Jennings, that it would be a conflict of interest to serve on that board, so he is going to remove his name from that ballot at this time. Under new business, the sewer?
Before you move on, the issue still before... The issue still before the council on this matter is to cast your vote for one of the remaining candidates on the ballot.
So we have one, to vote for one individual, we have Irene Belanger from China, Catherine Conlow from Bangor, Karen Fusel from Brewer, Peter Nielsen from Winthrop, Mike Roy from Waterville, Tony Smith from Mount Desert, and Barbara Valu from Penobscot County. Counselor Marble?
Sorry to be a little unclear on this. We can vote for one representative from that list. I don't know if this is a motion, or a suggestion, or how you word this, but I would move that we vote for Bangor City Manager Catherine Conlow, who I think has already had a seat on that, and I think would represent our interests well.
Further discussion?
You can't make another motion, because there's already a motion on the floor, so...
You don't want to discuss it?
Well, you can't until a second, then we discuss it.
Okay, anybody?
Second.
All right, now discussion?
Yeah, I'd rather vote for Tony Smith, personally, because he's been on the board also. Not that, what's her name, Catherine Conley?
Right.
Not that she's not good, but it's just my opinion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, of all, everybody on there, the only person I know is her, so I would support. I just have a hard time voting for someone I don't know, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and second for Catherine Conlow from Bangor. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Bill, would you?
No, only because I know Tony Smith too, from attending all the MRC meetings, and that's all.
Next item under new business is the sewer commitment, is the sewer bills that are being sent out from 7/1/2015 through 9/30/2015. Do I have a motion for the sewer commitment?
I make a motion that we...
Accept the sewer.
Accept the sewer commitment from 7/1/2015 to 9/30/2015.
My second.
Discussion? Counselor McAvoy?
Why do we do this? I mean, what's, you know, what's the theory behind this? Do we just have to approve sending out bills for whatever purpose, and this is one of them? I mean, what?
I think it's analogous to the commitment of the real estate taxes. I don't know what, has this gone to the council in past years? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that was my question. I mean, is, what happened, you know, have we ever voted, has the council ever voted not to do it? Okay. Okay, so, so my question remains, what function, what's the purpose of doing this? I mean, what's the rationale behind it? I mean, what, why do it if it's a pro forma type of thing? Why, why do we do it? I mean, by law, or something like that? Is there something in some bylaws somewhere that says we have to vote to send these bills out?
I don't know the answer, other than to say I suspect so, because certainly, before, you know, someone gets a bill from the municipality, it needs to be approved by the chief elected officials, which is this council, so...
Thank you.
So we have a motion and second. All in favor? Opposed? The next item is the Public Safety Grant Acceptance and Approval of Matching Funds. Public Safety Department has put in for a grant and was awarded the grant. The grant will pay $2,000, the town share was $1,052, and that money will come out of their grant matching account. Public comment? Do I have a motion?
I move acceptance of the grant and approval of matching funds, the grant in the amount of $2,000, and the town's contribution of $1,052 to come from the matching funds account. Second.
And just so you know, the items on there are ice rescue suits, rescue helmets, tactical gloves, rescue slings, rescue ropes, is on the list for the matching funds. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is update regarding sanitary sewer system mapping, Stillwater Environmental Engineering. They have come to the town, well, actually, the Public Works Director has contacted them about mapping the sewer system in town, getting it up to date. There's been some improvements and some stuff added on that needs to be added. Stillwater Environmental Engineering has agreed to do that for a fee of $2,500 to $3,500. It was brought up in Finance, unanimously recommended to send the council to update the sewer system mapping. Public comment? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept, or move forward, or accept the money to spend to update regarding the sanitary sewage system mapping by Stillwater Environmental Engineering.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The next item is an application for renewal of liquor license received from Armstrong Tennis Center at 60 McCarr Road. Public comment? Do I have a motion to accept the renewal?
I'll make a motion that we, the council, accept the application for the renewal of the liquor license received from the Armstrong Tennis Center at 60 McCarr Road.
My second.
Discussion? Counselor Marble?
Maybe it's just been a long day, but I find it potentially humorous to have a bar or whatever, where people are trying to stay healthy and play tennis, but if that's what they want to put together, God bless them.
Thank you for that comment. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none. The next item is the review of the MRC draft agreement for municipal solid waste management starting in 2018. We discussed this earlier in Finance, and I'll turn this over to Town Manager Angus Jennings.
So, as you know, the Municipal Review Committee, a nonprofit that represents 187 municipalities, including Hampden, and their negotiations with PERC on municipal solid waste management, has entered into a development agreement with Fiber Right, a private company based in Maryland, to build and operate a waste-to-energy facility right here in Hampden. That process is moving forward on one track. It's currently before the DEP for state permitting, and there's a public meeting this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM here in the, in the Public Safety Community Room. So, one set of issues is to do with our status as the prospective host community. The other set of issues is the broader agreement for municipal solid waste management for 187 municipalities, or whichever number signs on. The Municipal Review Committee, under the terms of their development agreement with Fiber Right, need to secure agreements to guarantee a minimum tonnage of 150,000 tons per year of municipal solid waste to Fiber Right, which is the minimum that they would need to operate their plant. What you have before you is a set of three legal agreements that are in draft form, which were sent by the MRC to Hampden in mid-October for review and comment. We had a working meeting last week with a couple of counselors and with DPW Director Sean Courier, and we talked through a number of questions and issues. Those were put forward in draft memo, discussed by the council, the Finance Committee, and based on the Finance Committee's recommendation, that memo appears to accurately convey this council's questions to be submitted to MRC. So the next step in this process, the MRC would take into account the comments they received from Hampden and all of the other communities, and recirculate more final draft legal documents sometime in December.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, I just, I want to verify for the general public that doesn't get to come to meetings in the middle of the week, or listen necessarily to discussions we have in committees like Finance and Administration, that this town is taking this very seriously. And I think the town should know that the Town Manager, DPW Director Sean Courier, Mayor, Counselor McAvoy and others are not just walking through this and accepting information that comes with, frequently with complicated legal lease jargon that's a challenge to wade through. So, there's a lot of due diligence going on, because it's a big issue, but I think people should feel positive in the engagement of the town in the process, and I just want to acknowledge that.
Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, so that's up to date on where we're at with MRC. The next item is committee reports. Counselor McAvoy with Services?
Thank you, Mayor Rider. At the November 9th Services Committee meeting, we discussed several topics, as well as Jane Jarvey's reappointment, which we did earlier. We discussed the agreement between the town and the MRC relative to our use of the Fiber Right facility, which is being contemplated. And Town Manager Jennings updated us on the timetable for the new audiovisual equipment, which is being installed in this chamber in the very near future, and the franchise agreement between the town and Time Warner from which the money to pay for the upgrade is coming. And we also briefly discussed how the separation of utilities is working at the ski-in center. And the next Services Committee meeting is scheduled for December 14th, and there is always room for members of the public to attend.
Thank you. Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Marble?
Well, I'm smiling, because as I expressed in an email, I sometimes get confused about which month's reports go into which set of minutes, and which ones should be reported on live at these meetings. So tonight, I'm just going to say the following themes have been frequently recently discussed at multiple meetings, including, public safety and use of fields issue continues to be looked at from several directions. There are concerns that are understandable about parking on some Saturdays in connection with youth soccer and other activities near the pool. We're looking steadily at options to that and best use. In that process, the Recreation Director and the Director of Public Works have collaborated, and have also collaborated on work to be done in the cost of equipment, like a replacement mower, and the installation of new doors in the ski-in center. We're continuing, as a town, to make process, progress with the cleaning of sewer catch basins, and we're continuing discussions about possible changes to both the layout and the functions of the transfer station regarding safety supervision, utilization of staff, and operational cost savings. I can clearly say that the next infrastructure meeting is one week from tonight, here at 6:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Shakespeare?
And I can say that we have not had a meeting. The last two have been canceled, but Wednesday evening, we will have one on November the 18th, and we will be discussing specifically the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you. And at the Finance and Administration meeting tonight, basically everything that you have heard in the council meeting tonight was discussed in Finance. So with that, the next item is the Managers' Report.
All right. What you have before you is, is, take the opportunity with these reports to update the council and the public on issues that are of interest, of importance, but not on the agenda. Some of these you'll certainly see on future agendas. So the first item, you saw in your meeting packet, we had correspondents from our health insurance provider notifying us that effective January 1st of 2016, we will see a 9.85% increase. So that's our preliminary estimate, that looks like it's going to take a $28,000 hit in the current fiscal year budget, so I'll be working with our finance staff on how, how we can meet that obligation. Obviously, that'll affect our budgeting for next year. The second item on my update is the municipal audit. We've been waiting anxiously for this, really eager to get the audit, because especially for me, coming in toward the beginning of the fiscal year, it's very, very important to understand how things happened last year, what's gone well, where are there areas for improvement. So we did speak with our auditor last week, and we, they sent us initial draft of different portions of the audit. So we've scheduled a meeting for this coming week to review that and any questions they may have, and we expect the audit to be finalized soon after that, at which point it'll be brought to this council. The third item, as you know, the Economic Development Director and I have been tracking the discussions that have been going on at the school building, the School Board's Building Committee, including related to their conceptual planning for both vehicular circulation and potential capital improvements to the McGraw-Weatherby School complex. There is a meeting tomorrow night, which I've sent out the agenda and the packet to this council, so Dean and I will be there tomorrow. We'll keep you posted on that. But certainly, we've, I've conveyed to the superintendent office that any kind of capital planning effort needs to be in close coordination with the town, so... The next item, I wanted to bring to your attention that I'll be working over the next six or eight weeks on personnel evaluations, reviewing people's job descriptions to make sure they accurately reflect the work of each position. In some cases, we found there are people who don't have job descriptions. Perhaps they've been here so long that they just didn't ever have one, or they have one that's so old that it really doesn't, doesn't mean anything. So I think from a, you know, management standpoint, both financial and personnel, I think it's very important to have job descriptions in an org chart that accurately reflects the town's capabilities, also taking into account the, our reliance on volunteers to get things done. And then completing personnel evaluations, I think is just sound practice. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, because to get through all of this, I don't know that I will be able to get done by early January. I'll do what I can, but I think it provides important inputs to the budgeting process, and wanted to make you aware, because it certainly will take a fair amount of time. Do you have a question on this one?
Sorry, just, just an easy one. Second paragraph, do you mean to complete by early January 2016?
You caught me.
Okay.
That's right. We're looking to complete the evals by early January 2016. It is. I don't think we'll get there, but I think we'll, you know, we'll work on it, we'll prioritize, and I think it'll certainly be helpful. The next item, which Counselor McAvoy referred to, was the Cable Franchise Agreement. Denise dug up a lot of files. I've reviewed those, as well as files that I found in my office. And as, as you know, Hampden is a member of this Penobscot Down East Cable Television Consortium. I've been, as of today... I've been, as of today, added to their email distribution list. I've gotten a couple of notes from different people on the group saying nothing much has happened since mid-July, which is the last correspondence that's on record in print copy in the office, but, you know, we're, we're now re-engaged in that process, and as soon as I have something more concrete, I'll bring it to you. And then finally, as was also previously referred to, the timeline for the AV upgrades to this chamber has been set, and that's on the third page of the report.
Thank you. The next item is Councilor's comments. Councilor Saroyes?
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank the residents and voters of the town of Hampden for re-electing me to another three-year term. Very humbled and very appreciative of everyone's coming out and voting, and secondly, supporting me in my efforts. That's it.
Councilor Shakespeare?
No comment.
Councilor Wild? Councilor Marble?
I'm not going to get this perfectly right, but I think it's worth mentioning, kudos go to the Hampden soccer and cross-country teams for more successful seasons, and if I'm leaving another sport out, I apologize deeply. It was mentioned tonight, I want to echo that it's great to see citizens stepping forward. The mayor mentioned this earlier. I think in the last four to six weeks, we've had at least four people step forward that I'm aware of in three different capacities. And, almost reluctantly to bring this up, but it's been brought to my attention by more than one citizen, that a few people are spending some of their time by spreading gossip about our previous town manager. And I just want to say for the record that while I might not agree with statements from people, I will always respect people who stand up and let you know who they are and try to speak to things based on evidence or information that seems credible. I can't respect people who spread information like this without saying who they are, without citing information about doing it. I think it does a disservice to the previous town manager, but it does a disservice to all of us at the same time.
Thank you. Councilor McAvoy?
Just want to remind everybody to shop local, buy American. Good night, Hampden.
Thank you. I just want to give an update. I received a phone call this week from a group of people that were down to Dorothy Addix Park, and were very happy with the results of the work down there. I encourage everybody, if they have a chance, to go down and check it out. It's a work in progress still. If they have any ideas or suggestions, we'd love to hear them. The other thing is, is I don't know if I have already, but if not, I would like to thank the Garden Club for a beautiful job again this year with the flowers out front. Every year, they do a great job, and I just wanted to make sure that they knew how much we appreciated it. Thank you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.